Thank you, Patty. Hey, good morning, everybody. It's November 6. This is our Budget Committee. I'm Sally Bagshaw, Chair of the Committee. Thank you all for being here after our grueling evening last night with looking at ballots. And I want to acknowledge, frankly, the fact that Councilmember Herbold, Councilmember Sawant, I know Councilmember Juarez will be here. It's not over, but I just want to acknowledge that I really respect the courage and integrity all of you have shown through this, and Councilmember Sawant. We'll see where this goes. There are a lot of ballots to be counted. Alex appears congratulations are due to you as well, so we'll have, we'll see more by the end of the week. So diving into our budget today, for the past several weeks, we all know that we have been taking the mayor's budget, looking at what she had proposed, and then closely re-looked at our own priorities. And I'm going to have something to say about those priorities, but I also want to extend big thanks to my council colleagues for focusing on what we know is the most important things that we needed to do around more affordable housing, better situations for people who are homeless, adding to our lead program and to the hygiene projects. We'll be talking more about that. So we began our review, you know, in late September when we first got the mayor's budget. We spent much time listening to our departments, listening to the public, meeting with people that have lived experiences around homelessness. And I know that what we are coming to today is not finalized, but I just also want to acknowledge that we on the council have spent a lot of time together looking at what is most important to us. So today, what we have is what's called the initial balancing package, and I want to acknowledge council central staff, all of you at the table and in the front rows. Thank you for spending your weekend with me last week. It made such a difference to have you talk to me about what you saw, what needed to happen. And I know Allie and Dan Eider, thank you for being really the co-chairs on this. Kirsten, under your leadership, I think we've come a long way, and I'm feeling very good about what the next steps are, because we have recommended many worthy projects, things that I believe that we all agree on. And I also want to acknowledge Ben Noble, thank you for the revenue forecast, thank you for working with us. And I know that we're going to have a lot to hear today. And just kind of on the overview of what's happening today, this is our initial budget package. We will have an opportunity to add things, or take things out, but know that they have to be budget neutral. We are now at a point where we have a balanced package, and any changes that we make, I'm hoping that council members can look at within their own set of priorities, so that when we come back a week from today for our final package, we will have as much consistency without finding ourselves having gaps that were unintended today. So just for example, some of the things that we have added, and again, I want to acknowledge with great thanks the fact that we are looking at a systems approach. It's what I started out with this budget talking about, that we want to build on what is working, because as I know my colleague Dan Satterberg has said, we know what we can do to really affect change, but what is working is at capacity. So we need to make these changes in a way that makes sense. So we are today going to be discussing our ad for 3.5 million for the lead program. All council members agreed on that as one of the top priorities. We're going to add 1.3 million. Councilmember Herbold, I want to acknowledge your leadership on this for five mobile units for bathroom facilities that can be moved, but to address the needs of people that wake up in the morning. You know, those of us who are housed, we're blessed. Those who don't have it, they have needs, just as we do, and these five mobile units are going to help. We're going to add 1.8 million for at least two tiny home villages. Want to acknowledge Councilmember Sawant and Councilmember Musqueta. This is something that you and I have been really championing for years. 1.8 million doesn't solve the problem, but it is really going to help address. And as we've heard from many people over the last month, people with lived experiences, we know those tiny homes do more for people to take care of their partners, their possessions, and their pets. We're also going to be adding 1.5 million for youth homelessness. I have directed to the University District, Roots in particular, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Pacheco and his advocacy for that. We're looking at adding a million dollars to expand homeless services for American Indian and Alaska Native individuals. This is Councilmember Juarez, the work that we've been doing with Colleen Echo Hawk, and the work that she is doing with her new Al Al homeless building that is going to be where the Lazarus Day Center is now. We're also going to be adding 700,000 for rental assistance pilot program. I believe Councilmember Gonzalez, you have been the lead of this for Home for Good. A 280,000 harm reduction outreach program for street-based sex workers and drug users. Again, all of us have agreed on this, and Councilmember Musqueta, thank you for your leadership. We're also going to be adding 200,000 for mental health outreach workers in the U District and Ballard, something that was championed by the local BIAs, and 1.8 million dollars in support for Downtown Emergency Services Center Bill Hobson Center, which will be down in Rainier. We will be adding that money primarily for their clinic. They have raised money for the housing that will be on top of it, but I'm very pleased that that has been included. So much of our initial balancing package coordinates our highest priorities, as we've mentioned, for housing and affordable housing and addressing homelessness, the lead program and hygiene. But this coordinates the work that we've also been doing in the criminal justice reform area. We're adding public safety investments for police and fire, but we're putting provisos on some of that so that it gets directed to where we want it to go. Likewise, we're going to be hearing more, and I think Calvin, you're going to be addressing this around our transportation priorities, priorities like I've put in for the Thomas Street connections and Market to Mohi. Some of that, we're going to have to put in advance till we know more about the impact of Initiative 976. I'm hoping we can still move forward with much, most, or all of these projects, but we have to be realistic that as 976, the results are coming out, we may not have the monies that we had hoped to have to continue our important transportation investments and simple maintenance, like some of the bridges that we've got, 700 of them that we need to address. And these are going to take major cooperation between the city, the county, the state, and indeed someday, I hope, with the federal government again. We are going to be looking at protections for immigrant and refugee communities and legal assistance for homeless youth and individuals facing eviction. We'll be putting in roughly a million dollars. And Councilmember Juarez, I'm sorry, maybe you're listening here, but we are going to have $500,000 to build a temporary replacement for Fire Station 31 built into our budget, and another 400,000 to promote the community gathering space for Fortson Square, which is part, again, of the work that is being done on behalf of Colleen Echo Hawk's work at Chief Seattle Club. And good that Councilmember O'Brien know that we've got money in this budget for the Green New Deal Board, an oversight board that you are hoping that we can include in this.
I'm very excited about that.
Good, I know you are. So we do have a balanced budget here, and I want to acknowledge again, and great thanks for council central staff for helping me really build a systems approach. This means a great deal to me in my 10th year on this council to make sure that we are having a harm reduction approach in our criminal justice system that will not only improve the outcomes for people who are in the criminal justice system or heading that way, but also improve the outcomes for people in our city as a whole. Many of the investments were recommended by the executive. We're just putting a big star that says thank you, and we may be supporting more investments in these areas. I want to acknowledge something we brought up last week, and that is the West Wing, which is immediately next door with the King County Jail. If you've not gone there, I really encourage my colleagues and the public to take a look at that. This is a 24/7 shelter that is providing what people need, a place to be 24/7, food that's brought in by our outreach group, the Operation SAC Lunch, and getting the services to people that they need when they need it and that right type of service. So again, that's what our investments are going to be doing as we coordinate this, and I want to acknowledge and give thanks to all who have been giving us input, whether it's our neighborhoods, our business leaders, our labor leaders, the city attorney's office, our judges, and again, people with lived experience have provided us with input that we have used to build on this new package. So I'm going to, at this point, add nothing more but to ask Tom Mikesow and Lisa Kay of our council central staff to begin walking through this. Questions, of course, we will answer, and then again, at the end of this session today, we will take public comment next Wednesday. Again, that will be our final balancing package. We will again have public comment at the end of that day. Then our vote, where we will actually be voting on the package, is Tuesday, November 19th, and we will go through line item by line item on all the items, and then the final vote and passage, we hope, will be the Monday before Thanksgiving. So with that, any comments? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chair Bagshaw. I just wanted to, in the very long list of appropriately given public thanks, I wanted to add a thank you to you for your leadership as Budget Chair. This is the second year that you've served in this role, and just really appreciate your thoughtful and careful approach to the budget and making sure that we up here have all the information we need in terms of process and next steps and procedures. And I think you've done a really good job of providing us with a solid, balanced, revised initial package, and just want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
It's not easy work, I recognize that.
Yeah. Councilmember Herbold?
Just a small addition to Councilmember Gonzalez's praise. I also want to thank you for being fair to all of us and recognizing that a council of nine people, we have a lot of shared goals, but we also have goals that are important to us individually. So I think the job of a Budget Chair is to use that power in a way that accomplishes both goals, and you've done so. And finally, I want to recognize that this balanced budget is not only a manifestation of this council's values, but even more importantly, it's a manifestation of yours. So thank you for doing that, and there's some really important things in here.
Thank you. Very good. All right, well, with that tearjerker, let me pass it on.
Can I say something?
Please.
And it's not to compliment you.
Thank you. Very hard for me to take, very hard.
That's okay. Not that I don't, I agree with everything that's been said.
That was a quick turn.
It was a good one.
Chair Bagshaw, with 150-some items today, I just wanted to sense, are you looking for us to chime in on each item, or really just let central staff walk through it if we have any questions on what that means?
I think the latter. Unless you've got something that you want to add, or specifically we haven't heard before.
Just move through it.
Yeah, because we've all talked about this multiple times now. We've had individual conversations about what's important to each of us. So moving through it, and as you pointed out, what was the number, at least 157 and 22 sly's or some such?
Something very close to that, yes.
So we got plenty to do, and I don't want to shut down conversation, but if you don't have anything either new or something you want to have fine tuned, let's just keep moving through this.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Select Budget Committee. I'm Tom Mikesow with Council Central Staff, joined by my co-budget coordinator, Lisa Kay, and also fellow colleagues from Central Staff. I thank you for your introductory remarks. They were a really good, helpful setup for the rest of today's presentation. Before I go into the subject matter, on the behalf of Central Staff, I would like to echo the thanks that we have to council members and their office staff in working through an enormous amount of detailed financial information and budget proposals. It's not easy work, and it's going really smoothly, and we appreciate the back and forth on that. We are a little over halfway through this process and still have the ways to go, but everything is going well. I want to also, on the behalf of Central Staff, extend a special thanks to you, Madam Chair, for your clear priorities at the beginning of our budgeting process and your commitment over the last few weekends working with staff to put the package together, and that went very well as well. So the way we have this set up this morning is to work from the agenda following the prioritization schedule that you have outlined, so that the homelessness, hygiene, housing, lead, and other priorities. We're going to cover 151 individual areas, and we're going to hit the highlights, but there will be opportunities to discuss each issue if desired, and we will bring the relevant subject matter experts from Central Staff to the table to assist that discussion as necessary. One of the things that members will note as we go through is that in some cases, the original proposed council budget action has been revised from what was discussed weeks ago. And this is in the context of the limited resource availability that we started with in terms of a fully allocated budget proposal that was received from the mayor's office. So where the, where the, technical difficulties, where differences do exist, there are a number of reasons for those. In one, in some cases, the number is different because the technical calculation of a position ad, for example, is slightly different than the proposal. So that's just a technical change. In other cases, given that we are dealing with scarce resources, there are items that have been identified as scalable. They can be delayed in some way, for example, hiring a position slightly later in the year. And so when those opportunities made sense, they were embraced. And finally, given that ongoing revenue is always at a premium in the cases where an ongoing to one-time revenue shift could be made, those options were chosen in some cases as well. So again, at this point, I think I'll just dive in and start. We're looking at Agenda Item 1, under the homelessness prioritization category. So Council Budget Action HOM 1A1 adds 206,000 general fund one-time to the Human Services Department to extend for 24 months the existing pilot program that provides two mental health outreach workers to serve the University District and Ballard. Item 2, Council Budget Action HOM 2-B-1 adds $600,000 to the general fund to the Human Services Department to set up and operate a new tiny home village for 40 households, which includes 142,000 in one-time funds and 458,000 in ongoing funds. This action also establishes a proviso. Item 3 is Council Budget Action HOM 3-B-1, which adds a total of $1.2 million general fund to the Human Services Department to expand the number of tiny home villages. Includes 600,000 general fund in one-time funding and 600,000 in ongoing funding. The total funding is estimated to support a single new tiny home village that will prioritize referrals from the NAV team, law enforcement assisted diversion program, and the Seattle Municipal Court. The action also establishes two provisos. Item 4 is a sly that requests a report on sites for tiny home villages. Item 5, which is Council Budget Action HOM-5-B-1 adds $1.5 million general fund in one-time funding to HSD, the Human Services Department, for relocation and building renovations for youth homelessness shelter. Item number 6, which is Council Budget Action HOM-6-B-1 adds 210,000 from the general fund to the HSD to expand outreach to homeless individuals residing in unsanctioned encampments in North Seattle, including in the Lake City and Aurora neighborhoods. Item number 7, which is Council Budget Action HOM-7-B-1 adds 100,000 from the general fund to HSD for outreach and parking offense mitigation and flexible financial assistance for vehicle residents, such as the services of the SCOFF Law Mitigation Program. Item number 8, which is CBA Budget Action HOM-8-B-1 adds $158,000 to the Human Services Department to start up and operate an overnight-only safe parking lot for individuals dwelling in vehicles. This is achieved with 33,000 in one-time general funds and 125,000 in ongoing funds. Item 9, as shown currently, it has been replaced, I believe, a replacement item has been distributed. This item should represent HOM-10-B-1, which adds $1 million from the general fund, including of which 395,000 is one-time, to HSD to expand homeless service for American Indian and Alaska Native homeless individuals. Item 10, which is Council Budget Action HOM-11-A-2.
Excuse me, Tom. On 9, did I miss something here? Because you were adding $10,000 ongoing to support transportation and activities for low-income seniors, and that was in addition to the $25,000, I believe, that the mayor had put in. So specifically, we're looking at $35,000 here. So talk to me more about the million dollars.
Yeah.
I can't, Madam Chair. So there was an error in the initial posted budget. It should be HOM 10-B-1, not HSD 10-B-1 for that item. HSD 10-B-1 is actually also listed later in the agenda, it was just an error. HOM 10-B-1 provides a million dollars, and this is for services to American Indian and Alaska Native individuals, such as the services provided by Chief Seattle Club. So that's the total package there. 395,000 of that is one-time, whereas the other pieces of it are ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
So our agenda is, this version is wrong.
Yeah, there was, HSD 10-B-1 was listed twice on the agenda inadvertently in the homelessness section, as well as later in the agenda in the other departments and topics. And so really, item 9 should have been HOM-10-B-1.
And that's what Patty was trying to tell me.
Yes.
As I was walking down the hall.
And I have additional copies.
So thank you, and I apologize for not catching it, but at least we are on the same page. So let's move on to item 10.
Item 10 is Budget Action HOM-11-A-2, which adds 100,000 general fund to the Human Services Department for legal services and representation for youth who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness, such as those provided by Legal Counsel for Youth and Children. Item 11, Budget Action HOM-12-B-1 adds 75,000 from the general fund to HSD to fund a smart wallet technology program to enable donations to individuals experiencing homelessness, such as the program operated by Samaritan.
Chair? Yes, please.
A question I have about that particular ad. It's my understanding that for every individual who has a Samaritan beacon, there is an expectation that they are receiving case management services. I'm wondering, and I've read, of course, only anecdotally, I don't have any data about this, but I've read anecdotally that service agencies, social service agencies that provide case management have been frustrated by an expectation that beacon holders can access or should be accessing very limited case management services. And I'm wondering, should there be a corresponding ad to pay for the necessary unfunded case management services associated with these beacons?
That's not included in the package as it is now. You are correct that in order for an individual experiencing homelessness who is participating in the Samaritan program to access their funds, typically they would need to be, they are required to be meeting with a case manager, which would take time from other types of case management activities as they meet individually with that individual. Whether or not that increases the overall time that has to be spent with that individual, I don't have data on that. We can work to get some more information for you.
I would like more information.
Great, thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Herbold? Please continue.
Okay, thank you. Moving to item 12, which is Council Budget Action HOM-13-B-1. This item adds $700,000 general fund and one-time funding to the, to HSD to create and evaluate a rental assistance pilot for individuals who are over 50 years, who are age 50 or older with limited income and are at risk or are currently experiencing homelessness. Item 13, which would, is Council Budget Action HOM-15-A-2 imposes a proviso on the navigation team appropriations in HSD. Item number 14, which is Budget Action HOM-19-A-1 adds $119,000 from the general fund in one-time funding and adds 1.0 FTE to HSD to add term-limited grant and contract specialists to the homeless strategy and investments division in HSD. Item number 14, I believe I covered that. Item number 15 reduces the, Council Budget Action HOM-60-A-1 produces the safe parking program in the HSD department by $125,000 general fund. So just as background on this, the 2020 proposed budget includes $250,000 GF in ongoing funding for this program and expanded the program by $125,000 from the general fund in one-time funding from an underspend in 2019. The program in the proposed budget only works with faith-based institutions to identify potential parking spaces. This budget action reduces the ongoing funding for this program and redirects the funding for a safe parking program at University Heights, as reflected in Budget Action HOM-8-B-1.
Thank you. Good, and Councilmember Herbold?
Just from my recollection, did we have any funds in the 2019 budget for this program?
Not for University Heights, which is the budget action for HOM 8-B-1. The 2019 adopted budget, as well as the 2020 endorsed budget, both provide $250,000 in ongoing funding for a safe parking pilot. And this takes, this current action that we're looking at, HOM 60, takes approximately half of that ongoing funding and redirects it to be used for a separate budget action.
And the 2019 money, were those able to be used for the purpose of a safe parking project?
They have not, they, HSD anticipates that there will be approximately half of those funds that will not be utilized in 2019. The mayor's proposed budget actually takes that unspent $125,000 and carries it forward for the same purpose to 2020, so that there would be an overall increase. If you looked at just the $250,000 in ongoing, the goal there is to reach 30 parking spots, taking the unused money from 2019 and adding it or layering it on top, ideally they'd get to 40 spaces. At this time, there are only five additional spaces, or a total of seven, that have been achieved with the pilot. There is work to continue expanding that and numerous faith-based institutions that are being spoken to, but that goal has not been met yet.
Good, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. I am always impressed by what you have in those brain cells of yours, so thank you. So please continue, item 16.
Item 16 is Council Budget Action HOM-61-A-1, which cuts $345,000 general fund one-time funding from the 2020 proposed budget for the Human Services Department.
And I'd like to just speak to this briefly. This is for our new regional governance effort, and I know that we've been struggling this. I do not want the Executive's Office to think that we do not want this program. We do. It's, we don't believe that adding people right away in the first quarter, that we're going to be ready for that, that we will have an executive director that will need to be hired. There are fabulous city employees and county employees that can come together and help move this forward. So this 345 is not to be received as a signal that I'm not supporting this regional governance that many of us have been working on all year, it's that it's a timing issue.
Item 17 is Council Budget Action HOM-62-A-1, which reduces by $1 million general Item 17 is Council Budget Action HOM-62-A-1, which reduces by $1 million general fund the appropriation in HSD, which is proposed to relocate two tiny home villages.
And I believe, just for clarification, that it's our desire, support, and effort to retain the Georgetown tiny home village. We understand that the one at Northlake has already been identified and notified that it will be closed at the end of December, but that there will be space made available elsewhere for them.
Thank you. Item number 18 adds $1.8 million general fund to HSD to construct a health clinic located within a permanent supportive housing facility in Rainier Valley, such as the Bill Hobson Comprehensive Clinic.
Thank you.
That's the final investment within the homelessness category of priorities. And now I'll move to the housing investments.
Great.
Item 19 imposes a proviso on the Strategic Investment Fund that is created in the 2020 proposed budget in Finance General.
Do you want to describe that proviso just briefly?
Madam Chair, that proviso would preclude the executive from spending the money that will be in Finance General for the Strategic Investment Fund until the executive presents a proposed spending plan to the council that they review and then approve by ordinance. Additionally, we added some language that has them specifically in the preparation of that spending plan to consider some criteria similar to that that is used for the Equitable Development Initiative in the preparation of the criteria that will then drive that spending plan. So we kind of married, actually, some language from a SLY that we were able to incorporate into this proviso that I think meets the interest in particular of Councilmember O'Brien.
Item 20, which is Council Budget Action OH-1-B-1, adds $50,000 in 2020 of fund balance from the Office of Housing's operating fund to support implementation of community preference policies for levy-funded affordable housing projects in neighborhoods at high risk of Item 21, Council Budget Action OH-2-B-1, adds $100,000 from the general fund in one-time funding to the Office of Housing to fund predevelopment and planning costs for a proposed housing project in Little Saigon that will assist American Indian and Alaska Native individuals and their families. Agenda item 22, which is Council Budget Action OH-3-A-2, adds $150,000 of one-time funding from the general fund to OH, the Office of Housing, to fund predevelopment and planning costs for affordable housing projects for low-income residents in the Central District. Item 23, Council Budget Action OH-4-B-1, adds $12.75 million from the general fund in one-time funding to the Office of Housing to make financing commitments to affordable renting rental housing projects. The definition of affordable would be affordable to households with incomes between 30% and 60% of area median income. These would be applied for funding in OH's Office of Housing's 2019 Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA process. This funding increase will be accomplished by reducing funding of several programs supported by the Mercer sales proceeds in the 2020 proposed budget. These other increases are achieved with Council Budget Action 9-A-1, or actually, that's, I apologize, that's the action that frees these funds up. In addition, this budget action states that the council's intent to appropriate $7 million in additional REIT II, Real Estate Excise Tax II, from 2021 to 2026. The additional $7 million will be used to make financing commitments for housing projects seeking funding in the 2019 NOFA.
Very good. Thank you for that, and want to acknowledge Councilmember Musqueta for really pushing this forward, and to all of our colleagues for nodding that this is something that is one of our top priorities.
Moving to item 24, this is Council Budget Action OH-8-B-1. This action imposes a proviso on $2.5 million in the Office of Housing for a necessary dwelling unit or ADU loan program. Okay. Item 25, which is Council Budget Action OH-9-A-1, cuts $18.2 million in proposed funding for programs supported by the Mercer Properties Sales Proceeds. So this is the other side of the transaction mentioned previously. Item 26, so apologies, so I am now moving from the housing investments to the hygiene priority category. Item 26 in this category, which is Council Budget Action HOM-9-C-1, adds $75,000 to HSD to provide women's hygiene products and diapers to residents at enhanced shelters, basic shelters, and tiny home villages that receive city funding. Item 27, Council Budget Action HOM-16-A-2, adds a total of $1,284,000 from the general fund to HSD for the purchase and operation, including staffing of five mobile bathroom facilities.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold.
Item 28, Council Budget Action HOM-50-A-2, adds $115,000 from the general fund to Seattle Public Utilities to expand the Encampment Trash Program through a partnership with nonprofit Item 29, Council Budget Action HSD-99-B-1, adds $3.5 million from the general fund, ongoing, to HSD to fund the LEAD program, and imposes three provisos.
While you're taking a breath, that was something that all of us up here really appreciate your support, and I want to acknowledge Lisa Dugard and King County Prosecuting Attorney Dan Satterberg, as well as our judges and city attorney and people with lived experience, and the providers for coming forward and saying, this is one of the most important things we can do. And it has gotten national attention, and I know that we will be looking for outcomes. And I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to everybody for getting involved in this.
Thank you. And I would say that I'm now in the LEAD category of priorities, so I've made the transition from hygiene priority to LEAD without notifying, but clearly, we're in that area now. Item 30 is also within the area of LEAD. This would adopt a resolution that acknowledges the inherent responsibility of the city to reduce unnecessary justice system involvement. Next category of priorities I will discuss are in criminal justice. This includes item 31, which is Council Budget Action CJ-2-A-2, which imposes a proviso on Finance General Reserves for the law department's staffing of a case conferencing pilot program. Item 32, which is Budget Action CJ-3-A-2, imposes a proviso on Finance General Reserves for the Rapid Reentry Connector Pilot at the King County Jail. Item 33, Council Budget Action CJ-4-B-1, imposes two provisos related to pilot programs for higher high-barrier individuals. Item 34, which is Council Budget Action CJ-5-A-2, imposes a proviso on $50,000 in the Office of Civil Rights Budget for community-based organizations to respond to hate violence. Item 35 is a statement of legislative intent, SLI CJ-6-A-2. This SLY requests that the Office for Civil Rights spend some portion of the $1,080,000 included in the 2020 proposed budget on community-based organizations to develop or provide restorative justice programs for individuals who commit hate or biased crimes. Item 36, which is a SLY, is CJ-7-A-2. This statement of legislative intent requests that the Seattle Municipal Court report back to council on how it would implement high-barrier probation programs. Item 37, which is also a SLY, CJ-21-A-2, requests reports from the executive addressing recommendations made by the Seattle Reentry Work Group on increasing economic opportunity for those living with criminal histories. Item 38, which is a SLY, CJ-24-A-2, is a statement of legislative intent that requests a report from the City Attorney's Office addressing a recommendation made by the Seattle Reentry Work Group on expanding prefile diversion opportunities for individuals 25 and older. Item 39, which is a SLY, is CJ-26-A-2, requests that the Seattle Police Department work with the Municipal Court and the City Attorney's Office to develop alternative reporting mechanisms that accurately capture race data and ethnicity, including but not limited to accurately capturing information on the Latinx community. And the final item, it says in the criminal justice category, is Council Budget Action CJ-61-B-1, which adds $124,000 one-time from the general fund to the mayor's Office of Domestic Violence Sexual Assault to contract with a provider organization to facilitate sex industry workers diversion classes.
Great. Thank you.
And at this point, I will turn it over to my co-coordinator, Lisa Kay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Lisa Kay, council staff, and I'm joined for this transportation section by Calvin Chow, who is your expert on transportation, as you know. Item 41 on your agenda is S.1-A-2. This item would add $150,000 from the School Safety Traffic and Pedestrian Improvement Fund for an active transportation coordinator at Seattle Public Schools to support walk-to-school and bike-to-school programs across the school district and support the school district's efforts to ensure that crossing guard positions are filled. Item 42 is a SLY, S.2-B-1, requesting that S. report on current maintenance spending for bicycle infrastructure and recommending accounting and budget process changes to measure this spending from year to year. Item 43 is S.4-B-1. This redirects $2 million of the Mercer MegaBlock proceeds in the Bicycle Master Plan and provisos the total $10.35 million of Mercer MegaBlock funding for bike infrastructure projects to be spent on bike facilities on Martin Luther King Way, Junior Way, I apologize, Beacon Avenue, and/or the Georgetown to South Park Trail. Item 44 is S.7-B-1. This would establish a new S.CIP project for pedestrian safety improvements at West Marginal Way, near the Duhamisch Longhouse and Cultural Center. It provides $0.5 million in TNC tax revenue towards an estimated project cost of $3.25 Item S.8-B-1 is number, item 45. This request that S., it's a SLY requesting that S. provides a Center City Streetcar Connector Financial Plan, including a new baseline project cost estimate, anticipated schedule, and a funding plan for capital and operating costs. The funding plan should also identify a contingent funding source if the federal small starts grant isn't forthcoming.
Chair? Yes, please. Councilmember Herbold?
I appreciate this SLY coming forward. I did have, folks remember, a Form B as relates to the funding use of the TNC tax, and I am very likely going to bring that back in the form of a Form C from the transportation issue paper that we heard at the start of budget. We know that we were anticipating $32.9 million of vehicle licensing fee revenue through the Seattle Transportation Benefit District in 2020. Of those funds, $24.6 million supports Transportation Benefit District programs, as approved by the voters, and $8.3 million supports basic infrastructure investments, such as the neighborhood traffic control and pothole programs. We have a $20 million reserve fund to help cover metro service in 2020 in anticipation of the passage of 976, but even with using that $20 million, I believe that 175,000 hours are projected to be cut in 2020. And the memo that we received as part of the Regional Transit Committee estimates that our reductions just in Seattle would be 115,000 hours in March, 60,000 hours in September. And again, these cuts will affect some trips on nearly all of the 74 routes, receiving some funding from the Transportation Benefit District. So I am likely to propose in a Form C that we use the, what's the number here, $32.9 million of transportation network tax dollars to address this shortfall. I recognize that there's some complexity about that because of the timing and how those funds are anticipated to come in versus when we would need them for metro services, but that's something I'm hoping we can work out between now and Friday.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 46, this is S.10-B-2. This would add $400,000 in TNC tax revenue and establish a new S.CIP project for reconstruction of Fortson Square at the corner of Yessler Way and Second Avenue Extension South. Item 47 is S.11-B-1. This would add $400,000 of TNC tax revenue to S. Market to Mohai CIP project for pedestrian lighting on four blocks along the 1.4-mile pedestrian corridor from Pike Place Market to South Lake Union.
Thank you.
Item 48 is S.12-C-1. This would add $1.8 million of general fund and establish a CIP project for S. to implement redesign of Thomas Street.
Thank you.
Item 49 is S.14-B-1. This would add $150,000 of TNC tax revenue to S. for a public life study of Capitol Item 50 is S.17-A-2. This is the Proposed Floating Car Share Permit Fee Ordinance. This would reduce the annual per-vehicle restricted parking zone fee from $700 a year to $200 a year. Item 51 is S.23-B-1. This would add $350,000 of TNC tax revenue for S. to implement additional projects identified in the Home Zone Pilot, which provides traffic calming measures on clusters of residential streets. Item 52 is S.24-A-2. This would add $200,000 of School Safety Traffic and Pedestrian Improvement Funds to construct walkway improvements along Northwest 132nd, within the walk shed of the Broadview Thompson K-8 School. Item 53 is S.201-A-1. This transfers the $3.05 million of Transportation Network Company revenue from Finance General Reserves to fund the S. expenditures described above that I just went through.
Thank you.
Item 54 is S.202-A-1. This would cut $134,150 of general fund and $115,850 of other funds, which is internal billing revenue from FAS, for the Director of Citywide Mobility. The mayor has advised the council that the work conducted by this position would be completed by the end of this year and that the position will end. I'll move now to the Transportation Network Companies, and Amy Gore and Karina Bull will walk you through the council budget actions that are associated with the TNC legislation.
Thank you, Lisa.
Item number 55 is Council Bill Action TNC DRC-103-A-1. Item number 55 is Council Bill Action, TNC DRC-103-A-1. This would substitute Version D-2 of Council Bill 119686 for Version D-1E and pass Council Bill 119686. The item number 56 is Council Budget Action, TNC Fee-101-A-1, which would substitute Version D-2 of Council Bill 119685 for Version D-1A and pass as amended. Item number 57 is Council Budget Action, TNC Men-103-A-1, which would substitute Version D-2 of Council Bill 119687 for Version D-1A and pass Council Bill 119687 as amended. Item number 58.
Just had a question. I'm not sure what these, they seem like technical corrections or grammatical in nature, but I'm not sure of the financial impacts of any of this stuff. Are these pretty much that, just technical corrections and whatnot?
There are no financial impacts related with any of these changes, but the amendments that were proposed by Council members through the Form B process, those Council Budget Actions have been incorporated into these substitute bills. And so I have a table, if you would like that, of the changes that are represented in these substitute bills.
That'd be good, Amy.
Okay.
Make sure the Budget Chair's not trying to sneak a freight train through this legislation here.
I am absolutely. You bet.
Here you go, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
This is a different one we're looking for.
Let me look for this one. Before you move on, Amy, let's leave a little bit of time here for Council President Harold to take a look at this.
Thank you, thank you. This explains it.
Okay. Item number 58 is Council Budget Action, TNC SPN-103-B-1, which requests that FAS and S. report on the feasibility of a Transportation Assistance Voucher Program. Item number 59 is TNC SPN-104-B-1, which would impose a proviso on Finance General Reserves related to a Transportation Assistance Voucher Program.
Just a question on that voucher program, and I see it's been reduced down. The question is, if in fact the data comes back and the new council next year looks at this and says, well, we need more money, this is not restrictive by any means, right? They can increase it at that point, they gotta find the money, it's not in the budget, but they can just make adjustments at that point. So this isn't like a binding piece of--
Right. The appropriations of the majority of TNC tax revenues will be made next year. There are certain items in the 2020 budget that you will be voting on next week that do include spending of TNC tax revenues, including $1.5 million to go to FAS, as well as now, I think approximately $3 million going towards particular transportation projects. The remainder of the TNC funds have yet to be appropriated, and that would be made through future council decisions.
And thanks for that, Amy. So just so I'm crystal clear, that next year, there, I still want council involvement is really where I'm getting at--
Yes, absolutely.
--as opposed to department or executive unilateral decision-making on this. And so what we've built into this package, I'm assuming, is the requirement that the council weigh in if in fact there's--
Yes, and the SLY, I'm sorry, the proviso in particular states that that proviso will be acted upon by council in the future. The intention is to act after this SLY has been received.
Yeah, and just as to not denigrate or criticize either department or executive on this, my point is that this kind of legislation just requires a lot of process, a lot of transparency. It affects a lot of stakeholders, and so I don't think a department or executive can just do it in a vacuum. So, okay, so that's fine.
Right, the appropriations of that fund will require future council action. The next Council Budget Action is TNC SP, I'm sorry, I just said that one, is number 60, which is TNC SPN-106-B-1. It would substitute Resolution Version D-3 of 31914 for Version D-1D and adopt Resolution 31914. And if you look at the handout that I just gave you, it has a long list of the changes that were made to that resolution, including adding the Transportation Assistance Voucher Program as a use of funds, adding third-party funding as a use of funds, as well as changing the area median income for the affordable housing, which was a request from Councilmember The final TNC budget action is TNC Tax 103-B-1, which would substitute Version D-4 of Council Bill 119684 for Version D-2E and pass Council Bill 119684.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I'll be moving on now to a series of other council, proposed council budget actions that are affecting a number of departments and offices citywide. So the first four I'll be covering have to do with arts. Item 62 is Arts 1-A-2. This would add $50,000 in General Fund to arts for the expansion of Coyote Central to the Lake City neighborhood. Item 63 is Arts 2-B-1. This adds $25,000 of admissions tax to arts to further align the work between the Race and Social Justice Initiative and racially equitable organizations serving artists of color, immigrants, and others experiencing structural opposition, such as the Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Committee. Item 64 is CBA Arts 3-B-1. This would add $15,000 of admissions tax to arts for access to online historical resources such as History Link. Item 65 is Arts 4-A-1. This frees up revenue for council priorities by cutting about $83,000 in admissions tax from arts and delaying the hiring of new positions by three months. There is one item pertaining to the Auditor's Office. This is Item OD-1-A-2. It provides a 5% salary increase to the Director and Auditors in the City Auditor's Office. Moving on now, there are seven CBAs pertaining to the City Budget Office. Item 67 is CBO 2-B-1. This is a SLY requesting that CBO report on steps, timeline, and funding to collect high earners' municipal income tax. It has a caveat that if the court finds against the city, the SLY requests a report from CBO on implementing and funding the imposition of an income tax on unearned income.
Thank you.
Item 68 is CBO 3-A-2. This is also a SLY requesting that CBO develop a proposal for a compensation program for boards and commission volunteers who are not otherwise reimbursed by their employers. Item 69 is a SLY, CBO 4-A-2, requesting a report from CBO on the use and contracted costs of beds at the King County Jail and options for distribution of services inside the county jail in light of the new West Wing Enhanced Shelter. Item 70 is CBO 20-A-1, which would transfer $2.14 million from the Unrestricted Cumulative Reserve Fund to the General Fund to support the council's priorities. Item 71 is CBO 21-A-1. This recognizes the City Budget Office's November 29 forecast update, which provided a $1.2 million increase in General Fund, about a $590,000 increase in STBD funds, and a $272,000 decrease in low-income housing fund revenue. Basically, a total increase of $1.3 million when all those are taken together. Item 72 is CBO 22-A-1. This adds $750,000 in ongoing revenue for the 2019 Information Technology Fund rate true-up. This is basically the difference between what was budgeted for internal cost allocations and the actual costs that were incurred. Item 73 is CBO 100-A-1. This would pass the Sweetened Beverage Tax Fund Policies Amendment Ordinance. This provides an exemption from the prohibition against using SPT revenues to replace other non-city funding sources such as grants, gifts, and loans, and authorizes a $2 million fund balance to offset revenue downturns. Item 74 is one of two CPC-related items. It's, the first one is CPC 1-A-2, which would add $200,000 in General Fund to the CPC to fund four work-plan items. Item 75 is CPC 1-B-1. This adds $80,000 in 2020 in General Fund to CPC to allow for contracting with outside legal counsel, and also imposes a proviso restricting the use of these funds to this specific purpose. Okay, moving to two items for Deal, the Department of Education, Early Learning and Education. Deal--
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's a SLY. Deal 1-A-2 requests that Deal conduct a stakeholder engagement and report on including labor harmony language in childcare assistance program contracts. Deal 3-A-2 imposes a proviso on $4.5 million of Deal Childcare Assistance Program expansion funds, subject to receipt of a plan to increase access to infant care through the CCAP. Item 78 is one of four Department of Neighborhood items. We have DON 1-A-2. It adds $75,000 to Department of Neighborhoods to support the Seattle Reps' Public Works Seattle program. DON 2-A-2 adds $75,000 to DON to support a South Park Public Safety Coordinator. And item DON 3-A-2 adds $34,000 to DON for Hub in a Box, which provides emergency response equipment to serve neighborhood hubs. The last DON item is a SLY. It's DON 4-A-2, requesting that Department of Neighborhoods report on long-term funding opportunities to preserve and enhance P-patches. I will turn it over to Tom for the next batch.
Thank you, Lisa. So I will continue now with item 82, which is Budget Action, FAS-1-B-1. This action adds $500,000 from Real Estate Excise Tax 1 to the Department of Finance and Administrative Services Fire Station 31 Improvement CIP project. Does this in 2020 and renames the CIP project to Fire Station 31 Temporary Station for creating an interim fire station and siting of a permanent fire station. The amended CIP project provides funding to site and erect a temporary station using tents and trailers and funding for site selection for a permanent fire station. Item 83 requests the Finance, Department of Finance and Administrative Services, in consultation with the Office of Labor Standards, to develop a plan for adding questions to the city's registration process for Title VI business license applications. Item 84 is FAS-6-A-1. This item reduces the appropriations in the Department of Finance and Administrative Services for waterfront local improvement district payments for city-owned properties. Their total amount of the reduction is $767,560. Item 85 is FAS-100-A-1. This action recommends passage of Council Bill 119682, which amends the city's business license or BNO tax code to comply with state requirements. In 2019, the state legislature enacted Substitute House Bill 1403, which modified the apportionment formula for local businesses and occupation tax as codified in RCW Section 35. This change is required to be implemented by January 1, 2020 in order for cities who use a BNO tax to continue to use that tax. Item 86 is similar in nature. It is FAS 101-A-1, which recommends passage of Council Bill 119683, amending the city's business license or BNO tax code to extend the tax return and payment date for annual filers of the BNO text to April 15 of the year following the period covered by the return. Similar to the prior item of legislation, this is required in order to comply with the model tax code under state law. Item 87 is a SLY, HSD 1-A-2. This SLY requests that the Human Services Department provide a report to the Civic Development Public Assets and Native Communities or its successor committee on contracts with American Indian and Alaska Native organizations, as well as recommendations to ensure funding for these organizations is equitable and sufficient, with a due date of March 31, 2020. Item 88 is HSD-4-B-1, which adds $60,000 of one-time funding from the General Fund to HSD to contract with a nonprofit organization to conduct statewide lobbying and advocacy with a focus on addressing poverty and creating opportunities for everyone to prosper through people-centered approaches. Item 89 is also a SLY. It's HSD-5-A-2. This statement of legislative intent requests that the Human Services Department provide a report on the cost, feasibility, and methods of providing resources to subsidize transit passes for employees of HSD contracted services providers. Item 90 is HSD-10-B-1. This item adds $10,000 of ongoing funds to the Human Services Department to contract with nonprofit community-based organizations to fund transportation and senior activities for low-income seniors. Item 91 is HSD-30-B-1. This item adds $150,000 of one-time funding from the General Fund to HSD to contract with nonprofit dedicated to empowering native youth to live healthy lives by providing awareness, prevention, and character enrichment using sports as a modality. Item 92 is HSD-51-A-2. Did I get that right? This item adds $50,000 from the General Fund in one-time funds to HSD for educational programs targeted to the African-American community on HIV/AIDS and chronic disease. Item 93 is HSD-53-A-2. This item imposes a proviso on the Human Services Department for substance use disorder and treatment programs. Item 94 is HSD-54-B-1, which adds $140,000 of one-time funding from the General Fund to HSD for harm reduction and outreach services to street-based sex workers and drug users. Item 95 is HXM-1-A-2. This item adds $23,000 General Fund to the Office of the Hearing Examiner for portable recording equipment and for a planner to participate in mediation. Item 96 is LAW-2-A-2. This item adds $113,000 General Fund and one FTE paralegal position to the City Attorney's Office to support the Regional Domestic Violence Firearm Enforcement Unit. Item 97 is LAW-3-A-1. This item cuts $31,366 of one-time funding in the General Fund from the City Attorney's Office by delaying hiring for the Assistant City Prosecutor position added in the Mayor's 2020 proposed budget. This delay is by three months rather than supporting the full-time costs, full-year Item 98 is Budget Action, LAW-5-A- Item 98 is Budget Action LAW-5-A-1. This item cuts $270,648 general fund from the city attorney's office that was included in the 2020 proposed budget. The 2019 adopted budget assumed a salary savings cut that the mayor restored in the 2020 budget with inflation, and this budget action cuts the addition of those funds.
Chair?
Sure.
Could you just talk a little bit more about this? So I'm just not tracking it from your description. There was additional funding in the mayor's proposed budget from salary savings in 2019?
We are being joined by Asha, who will provide.
Thank you. Asha Mcaturman, Council Central Staff. So in the 2019 adopted budget, the mayor had assumed vacancy savings of $250,000 and had cut those funds. In the 2020 proposed budget, they, the mayor's office, had put those funds back into the city attorney's office, in addition to some inflationary funds. And so this $270,000 was intended to allow for civil attorneys to get an increase in the pay band. The original intent of cutting it was just to do an overall general fund savings. But now, LAW had indicated that without these funds, they wouldn't be able to increase the competitive nature of civil salaries. And so the mayor's proposed budget had added this back in. So now, taking it out would put them back to the current, the state of affairs they were in in 2019.
Do you want to talk about how this dovetails with the case conferencing attorney that we had put in earlier?
This is not related to additional staffing. It's, which that is, this is related to increased salaries for existing staff, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's not, it's not cutting anybody?
Correct.
At this point, it's just not raising salaries midstream?
Yes, that's correct.
Item 99 is Budget Action LEG-2-A-2, which adds $20,770 from the general fund on an ongoing basis to the Legislative Department to increase the salaries for two reclassified positions in the Communications Division. Item 100 is LEG-5-A-1, which adds $100,000 from the general fund to the Legislative Department to create an infant and parent room in City Hall. The City Council passed Resolution 31910, which lays out steps to create an infant at work pilot program for the city of Seattle.
Thank you.
Item 101 is OCR-1-B-1. This item adds $15,000 from the general fund to the Office of Civil Rights to create a stable source of funding for the city of Seattle's annual Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, and would also impose a proviso. Item 102, which is OCR-2-B-1, adds $15,000 from the general fund to OCR, Office of Civil Rights, to create a stable source of funding for the city's Human Rights Day celebration. Item 103, which is OCR-3-B-1, adds $15,000 from the general fund to OCR to provide a stable source of funding for the city's Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Junior Unity Days celebrations. Item 104 is OCR-4-A-2. This item adds $252,876 from the general fund to OCR and adds two positions. One FTE dispute resolution mediator for a restorative justice approach to resolution of cases regarding violation of the city's civil rights laws, and one FTE planning and development specialist two position to help with community outreach. Item 104 is OCR-5-A-1. This item cuts $52,404 general fund from the Office of Civil Rights by delaying hiring for two proposed additions in the mayor's 2020 proposed budget. These position delays would be three months rather than supporting full-year costs. Moving to item 106. This is Council Budget Action OED-1-B-1. This item adds $100,000 of one-time funding from the general fund to the Office of Economic Development, or OED, for a consultant study of employment dependent on fossil fuels in the Seattle metropolitan area. Item 107 is a slide, a statement of legislative intent. It's OED-2-A-2. This slide requests that OED collaborate with the Office of Housing, the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections, and the Office of Planning and Community Development to identify strategies and develop tools that will help connect building owners and developers with small businesses and service providers that are seeking commercial tendencies. Item 108 is OED-5-B-1. This item adds $75,000 of general fund money on an ongoing basis to OED to contract with a nonprofit organization that has a history of partnering with municipal governments and businesses to develop career pathways, a group such as Workforce Development Council of Seattle, King County. This is to support high-road apprenticeships. Item 109, which is OED-8-B-1, adds $116,291 in ongoing admissions tax revenue to the Office of Economic Development for a film and music program lead position. This position will focus on managing film and music program functions. Item 110 is OED-10-A-2. It's a statement of legislative intent that requests that OED provide recommendations regarding the creation of a film commission to serve as an independent advisory body to the city council and the mayor on issues related to the film industry in Seattle. Item 111, which is OED-12-A-1, cuts $65,000 of one-time funding from the general fund from the Office of Economic Development. And this is a portion of the $164,000 general fund appropriated for the Creative Industry Policy Advisor position in the 2020 proposal. The action delays the position from January 1 to June 1, 2020. Item 112, which is OED-13-A-1, cuts $100,000 of ongoing funding from the general fund from the OED budget for business recruitment and retention consultant services. Last year, council adopted Green Sheet 22-4-A-1, which cut $100,000 from OED's 2019-adopted and 2020-endorsed budget. That was proposed to support Greater Seattle Partners, a public-private regional economic development corporation. Despite this action, executive fully funded this contract in 2019. The action cuts funding for this contract from OED's baseline, which was included in the 2020 proposal. Item 113 is OED-19-A-2. This item adds $200,000 of one-time funding from the general fund to OED to provide funding to the Central District Community Preservation and Development Authority for costs associated with the redevelopment of the Seattle Vocational Institute Building in the Central District. Item 114 is Budget Action OEO-1-A-1. This item reduces relocation funds for the Office of Employee On-Bud by $135,250 general fund in 2020. This is a one-time reduction. The 2020 proposed budget included $541,000 in one-time funding for relocating to a larger office space to support a growing staff and operating needs. The budget action would reduce this amount and provide OEO, the Office of Employee On-Bud, with $405,750. So that is essentially the new revised amount in one-time funding to cover these costs. Item 115 is OIG-1-B-1. This item adds $80,000 general fund on an ongoing basis to the Office of the Inspector General for Public Safety for the retention of legal services in order to receive independent legal advice and representation in policing-related matters, particularly with relation to United States versus Seattle before the US District Court of Western Washington. The action also imposes a proviso. Item 116, which is OIG-2-A-1, adds 1.0 FTE to the Office of Inspector General for Public Safety for an operations manager position. This position is funded with existing budget authority, so this is just a position hat. Item 117 is O-I, so OIRA-1-B-1. This item adds $375,000 from the general fund on a one-time basis to the Office of Immigration and Immigrant and Refugee Affairs to reestablish the Rapid Response Fund. Item 118 is OIRA-3-A-2. This item adds $50,000 of one-time funding from the general fund for deferred action for childhood arrivals and temporary protective status application scholarship funding. Item 119 is OPA-1-B-1. This item adds $80,000 from the general fund in 2020 on an ongoing basis to the Office of Professional Accountability to account for, to allow for contracting with outside legal counsel. This action also establishes a proviso. And I believe now I'll be handing it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Tom. So we are on item 120. We're in the backstretch here. I have four items from the Office of Planning and Community Development here. The first one is a proviso that is subject to a work plan that's requested in a slide. So this is a proviso of $150,000 in 2020 for comprehensive plan outreach and engagement in OPCD. The proviso will be lifted after OPCD presents its work plan, including plans for a racial equity toolkit, to the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee or its successor committee. Item 121 is a proviso only. This is OPCD 2-B-1. It would proviso half a million dollars in OPCD to be used only for an environmental impact statement associated with the next major comprehensive plan update, and prescribes inclusion of several specific alternatives in the EIS. Item 122 is OPCD 3-B-1. It adds $35,000 general fund to OPCD for a natural capital valuation study to identify how critical ecosystem services may be incorporated into key areas of city planning. Item 123 is OPCD 100-A-1. This would pass Council Bill 119676. This is the OPCD Equitable Development Initiative Interfund Loan Extension of one year to December next year to be repaid from sale of the former Civic Square block, which is anticipated to close in 2020. Moving to Office of Sustainability and Environment, there are three items here. OS-E 1-B-1 would add $136,291 general fund and one FTE Strategic Advisor One position to OS-E to support the Green New Deal Oversight Board and the Climate Action Interdepartmental Team. And it also imposes a proviso. That proviso restricts $20,000 to compensate board members for whom participating on the board would present a financial hardship. Item 125 is OS-E 2-B-1. This adds $760,000 in sweetened beverage tax funds to OS-E. Adds $960,000 sweetened beverage tax to Human Services Department. Adds $300,000 in SBT to Seattle Parks and Rec. Adds $475,000 sweetened beverage tax to Department of Early Learning and Education, and cuts $2.5 million sweetened beverage tax from Department of Neighborhoods. And it imposes a proviso that goes into detail about how those funds are redirected. Item 126 is OS-E 3-A-2. This is a slide requesting that OS-E establish high-road contracting standards for electrical contractors. Item 127 is also a slide. This is SCL 2-A-1. This is requesting that Seattle City Light report to its strategic planning, or reports on strategic planning, in accordance with Seattle's Green New Deal resolution. Moving to four STCI CBAs. Item 128 is STCI 4-B-1. This would add about $11,000 to fund one TL, term-limited temporary FTE electrical inspector through the end of 2021, and a vehicle to enforce Washington State regulations related to electrical contractor licensing. Item 129 is STCI 5-A-2. This adds $235,684 general fund plus one FTE housing and zoning technician and one FTE code compliance analyst to Seattle Department of Construction and Inspection for tenant outreach and property owner and tenant assistance group staffing to facilitate implementation of new tenant protection regulations. Item 130 is STCI 7-B-1. It adds $150,000 general fund to STCI to contract with a housing justice project of the King County Bar Association or a similar organization to provide legal representation for Seattle renters facing eviction. The last STCI item is STCI 100-A-1. This is budget legislation recommending passage of the STCI annual fee ordinance. These fee adjustments will result in an estimated net increase in STCI's 2020 fee-based revenue of $1.2 million. Most of the fees have been adjusted to implement inflationary adjustments and to reflect the anticipated annual wage increases that would be effective January 1. Okay, moving to Seattle Department of Human Resources. We have three items here. SDHR, this is item 132. SDHR 2-A-1 would cut $132,138, $132,138 general fund in 2020 funds for a one FTE Strategic Advisor in SDHR for anti-harassment and anti-discrimination trainings. Item 133 is SDHR 3-A-1. This would cut about $150,000 for one FTE Strategic Advisor One position in SDHR for the City Leadership Academy. That Leadership Academy is being run now by volunteers and seems to be doing well. Rationale there. Item 134 is SDHR 101-A-1. This would pass Council Bill 119688, that would establish an employee-giving program that would be conducted by a designated campaign administrator. Item 135 is from the Seattle Fire Department. SFD 1-B-1 would add $600,000 general fund to augment one recruit class. Moving, we have eight Seattle Police Department-related council budget items. The first one is a slide. This is SPD 1-B-1, requesting that SPD, in conjunction with other city departments, lead an examination of the Charged by Officer program. Item 137 is SPD 3-A-2. This adds $48,000 in authority for one FTE Strategic Advisor position to SPD to work with data systems that record interactions with indigenous people, and imposes a proviso to restrict the funds to this purchase. The $48,000 is just a marginal increase from the position that had been at a lower classification. Item 138 is SPD 4-B-1. This adds $87,500 to SPD to contract with an indigenous-led organization that can assist the city with its efforts to end the missing and murdered indigenous women and girls crisis, and impose a proviso to restrict funds to this purpose. Item 139 is a proviso that also, this is SPD 6-B-1. It would proviso $122,000 of SPD appropriations related to additional training aimed at addressing the criminal justice system's responses to the various needs of individuals involved in sex work. Item 140 is SPD 8-B-1. It adds $127,000 to SPD for a regional domestic It adds $127,000 to SPD for a regional domestic violence firearm enforcement detective and imposes a proviso that $130,000 is appropriated solely for a detective position to be assigned to the regional domestic violence firearm enforcement unit and may be spent for no other purpose. Item 141 is SPD-50-A-1. This would reduce funding for SPD to subsidize the recruit testing fee. It would provide $70,000 that would allow SPD to waive the $50 testing fee for 1,500 people and waive or reduce testing fees for others who cannot afford the fee. Item 142 is SPD-51-A-1. This would reduce...
I'm Greg Doss, Central Staff.
This would be Mr. Doss.
Actually, the last item is a cut, and it is a cut to the testing fee that is paid for SPD recruits who are going to be taking the exam on video screens. And the assumption or the rationale for it is that the testing fee would be means-tested, and those who couldn't afford it, it would be provided for, but others would not have it provided for.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I basically characterized it as an add, and it's a cut. My apologies. My apologies there.
Okay, so we are at SPD-142, or item 142. I don't think I did 142 yet. I'm going to do item 142, which is SPD-51-A-1, which would reduce SPD's budget for staff support of its recruitment and retention initiative by $75,000. Item 143 is SPD-52-A-1. It would reduce SPD's budget for its proposed sergeant training by $240,000 in 2020.
Chair, please.
I just want to put, for the viewing public, item 51-A-1 in context. There is a reduction, a proposed reduction of $75,000 for staff support of recruitment and retention, but it's important, I think, to note that the 2020 budget includes $1.6 million for a new recruitment and retention initiative.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to the next one to add to it? Okay.
I think we're on item 144 now. So this would be Seattle Parks and Resources, item 1B1. Actually, this should be, this is part of your hygiene priorities. We just misclassified it in our sort. So SPR-1-B-1 adds $244,000 in King County levy funding to Seattle Parks and Recreation to provide additional shower services for homeless individuals at several community centers and amend the Comfort Station renovation CIP project.
Thank you.
Moving to item 145, this is SPR-2-B-1. This would add $150,000 of fund balance to Parks and Recreation to fund a feasibility study for an Aurora Licton Springs Community Center and amend the Community Center Rehabilitation and Development CIP project. Item 146 is a SLI, SPR-6-A-2. This requests a progress report from Parks and Recreation on the Green Seattle Partnership Program to restore 2,500 acres of forested parklands in Seattle by 2025. Item 147 is SPR-7-A-1. This would cut $500,000 in Recreation Facilities Program in SPR and backfill it with $0.5 million in King County levy funding, cut from the Play Area Renovation CIP project, to allow general funds to be used for other council priorities. Item 148 would recommend passage of Council Bill 119-671, which is the Parks Fee Ordinance. It includes revisions to the fee schedules and elimination of low-income recreation swim fees starting January 2020. The revenue reduction of about $45,000 annually would be backfilled by reducing the daily operation of some wading pools. Item 149 is Seattle Public Utilities, SPU-1-A-2. It's one of two, and we're ever so close to the end here. This redirects ongoing water fund reserve appropriations to add $30,000 to SPU to improve shut-off notifications to multifamily building residents. And item 150 is to pass Council Bill 119-672, which is the city's solid waste rates.
Good. I will turn it back to Tom.
So the final two items are under the category of budget legislation, and these are unique in that they are adjusting the current 2019 budget. The first is to pass Council Bill 119-667, which is the Third Quarter 2019 Grant Acceptance Ordinance. This legislation authorizes the acceptance of $7 million of funding from non-city sources. Item 152, which is item BLG-2-A-1, is a recommendation to amend and pass Council Bill 119-668, which is the Third Quarter Supplemental Appropriations. So this makes increases and decreases to the existing 2019 budget. There is one item that is under development that is part of the package, though it's currently under legal review, which is the establishing a proviso on 2019 CDBG funds, approximately $900,000.
Right. Colleagues, do you have any questions on any of this? We have reached the end of the discussion items for today. All right, well, seeing none, we can move into public comment, and we've got five people signed up here. Good to see you again. And Janice Wilson, Rick Cooper, Steve, Gordon Padelford, and Brian Bellinger, in that order. So can I ask Janice to come up first, and Rick Cooper? Not seeing Janice? Okay, Rick, welcome, and then we'll have Steve.
I'm Rick Cooper. I'm a part of a much broader coalition of 25-plus organizations and businesses supporting the Thomas Street Redefined Project. It has been planned for decades, but not really very seriously. Now is the time to get serious. It could be a critically important new pedestrian and bicycle-focused connection to Seattle Center. Now is the time to create this connection, and Seattle Center starts to attract millions of additional visitors to our exciting new arena. Thomas Street is a transportation corridor that needs citywide financial support. Thomas Street will serve residents, workers, and visitors far beyond just District 7. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it, and thank you for being such a stalwart. Steve, before you speak, Janice Wilson has come in, and you, Janice, you signed up first. Would you like to speak?
I appreciate it. I'm sorry. Thank you. Hello, and thank you all for doing the phenomenal jobs that you do. I'm really kind of new at this, and so much of it, I'm learning such a rapid amount of the importance of government and our participation and our presence for our own future relevance. I hope I can help better as time goes on. In saying that, I'm going to probably do a lot more writing and trying to participate in understanding by coming to the committee meetings. I just found out a lot of stuff that I didn't know before. I really think that, I'm going to say something about people, they were going to have a special, maybe special test on 20 people, medication for one of them, 10 of them, and subliminal medication for another group. I really think that we really need to not make more tester kits out of human beings than just getting their necessities met and bringing in a more compassionate standard in these homeless facilities. And also our environments, work on the volatile, aggressive behaviors in the programs as well as outside and in people's attitudes. So I think I'll kind of leave it at that, but I'm grateful for every opportunity that we have to tell people the importance of their lives, as well as our business purposes are very important for us to help get our needs met, but also participate as helping modernize the intentions of not only ourselves in 50 states, but also the global world. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Steve, then Gordon Padelford, then Brian.
Well, MHA is still not working, at least to the North End, where we're having problems of people putting the housing on-site. I think you should be raising your fees so we can get closer to the 50-50 goal. I think that would also help with a very big problem in the city. You've declared an emergency and then not done a whole lot about improving the situation. I think that we should be also passing a tree ordinance, you know? Clearcutting environmentalists are like we have in Washington, DC. You know, people who claim to be the best environmentalist in the world and still don't do the basic stuff. There's no tree huggers here on the Seattle City Council, it appears. Seattle needs to take a better look at not spending all our money on enabling. We should be moving people out of homelessness. Homelessness is not a good place to make people comfortable. We should be moving to move people out. And that should also mean talking to our friends at the state legislature and the governor, because we spend Seattle resources, it appears, weakening the State Environmental Protection Act, but how about getting more money for mental health, more money for substance abuse? These are very large parts of the problem of people on the street. And until we start working on those things and not just making people feel comfortable, we're going to have a continued problem. Now, I admit, the feds have given up on housing, and they used to be of very big support, and that one is probably not one you could spend a lot of time on. But you should at least be talking to your friends at the state legislature about doing things that are going to make Seattle better than it is right now. So hopefully, all child facilities that the city supports will be bottom-up. The lowest-paid worker gets first crack.
Thank you, Steve, and I want to reassure you that we are spending a lot of time with our colleagues, talking to them in the legislature, so don't think we aren't. Council, nice to see you, Mr. Padelford.
Hi. Good morning, council members. I think, like many of you, I'm still processing last night's election, but one thing is for sure, is that I-976 is going to be a disaster for both our state and our city, and we're committed to working collaboratively with all of you to find solutions. And I would urge us to do so cautiously in a way that centers our values and priorities as a city. And in that regard, you know, maintaining things like the Thomas Street project is really critical. Two-thirds of every, of every night of the year, or two out of every three nights of the year, rather, there's going to be a major event down there, and so making sure we're able to get people there walking and biking is going to be really critical. So I'm hoping we can find other sources of funding for backfilling from I-976. You know, the Thomas Street project has been such a fun one to work on, because it's brought together such a wide range of stakeholders. From just recently, the Seattle Children's Theater signed on in support, and Expedia. So you have this really wide-ranging group supporting this project, because everyone is seeing the value in it. And thank you to Councilmember Bagshaw for proposing the addition. Hope we can find a way to maintain that. A few other thank-yous. The Home Zone Pilot Extension is fantastic. Thank you for extending that. The Active Transportation Coordinator for the School District will be so helpful in getting kids to school. It's really great to see in there. Additional funding to bring bike facilities to southeast Seattle is sorely needed, so thank you for that increase. And, you know, the Duamish Longhouse connection, working with the Duamish tribe to try and do right by them and get people to their longhouse is really critical, so thank you for that addition as well. So thank you all for what you're doing. I hope we can work together to find solutions to address the Tim Iman disaster in a way that doesn't further the pain that we're going to all incur. So thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Brian?
Thank you. Council members, guests, department heads, in case you guys are not aware of who I am, this is who I am. I'm on the front page. And what I'm here for today is because I was kind of browsing through this, and throughout the course of this budget thing, there wasn't anything that had to do with shelter reform, nor paying, repaying any of us who have been robbed, cheated, and through this fraudulent program that has been ran through the Blaine Center. Compass Housing Alliance is failing terrible. What I know is the contract with Housing Alliance is through the city, so that means the city is responsible for anything therefore that takes place. By condoning this theft and this fraudulent activity and the cover-up of this illegal program where people profited from my money, you see, I still haven't been repaid. Not a thing. And so what I'm curious to know is, how come all of this stuff is getting swept under the rug? Throughout this budget thing, there was not a word mentioned about any of us getting repaid. You must condone it. Theft and fraud is a very, very important thing to a lot of us people down there, because we're trying to do what's right. And this example that's being set forth is only making us lose faith in what we have before us. So what I'm more curious to know is, are we going to be working together? Because as I know, to be true, Miss Steele, Miss Mary Steele, and Adrian Easter of the city are failing terribly at keeping this quiet and handled in an inexpensive way. What needs to be known is this is a powerless situation and an uncontrollable tragedy is what we have here. Charging people, homeless people, to stay in a shelter. What's going to be done? There hasn't been nothing done. There's been no talk. There's no anything. I've been upstairs to the mayor's office four times and left messages, and nobody wants to talk about this. They just think it's going to go away. I'm very adamant, resilient, and savage as to where I will get this money back, and I will expose the fraudulent relationship between the church and the city if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Bellinger.
Thank you.
All right. This brings us to the conclusion of our session today. I want to thank all of you again, council, central staff, for your hard work, my colleagues, for your deep involvement, engagement in all this. So we're going to adjourn this meeting today. Our next budget committee meeting will be just a week from today at 9:30, where at that time, we hope we will have a completed package. Thank you. Thank you so much. The meeting's adjourned.